Now, I see a little bling, so let me see what you got. Okay, what's this? Four by one, four by one? Okay, she has six medals. She's not real sure exactly. That's awesome. Congratulations. Long jump and four by one? How far did you go? Did you beat it?
Not yet.
Yeah, alright, you're a good answer. That's fantastic. A fifteen hundred, how long? What was your time? You could have made something up. Five thirty-nine. I bet y'all can't do that. Individual? In the one? How fast? That's smoking it. Congratulations.
No, ask her about a four hundred.
Okay, give me about the four hundred.
Fifteen seconds. Second. Four hundred meters, one left.
Alright, again, I bet y'all can't do that. She's gonna keep this. Proud of you. Thank you so much. By the way, she- She runs an organization called Awesome Achievers. She works with kids with autism and she's just a wonderful person. As a matter of fact, Caitlin- Where's Caitlin? Caitlin used to be my size, and now she's her size. Thank you so much for coming in. Congratulations, y'all. Now, Randy McGinley, I'm not gonna do a proclamation for you, but I'm sure yours will be just as exciting.
Probably not, but thank y'all for having me. I want to thank the City Council and everybody for what y'all do. I know when I came in front of you guys, I would say it was late last year, asking for some funding for this gang position, I told you I'd come and update you guys on what's going on and what, and how my office is using that funding in a great way for the taxpayers, because obviously that is something that is of concern. I'll tell y'all one thing I don't think I shared last time, because I don't think it had been done yet, but just so you're aware of this, obviously we're the Al Kove Circuits, Newton and Walton County. AOC, which is different areas, is the Administrative Office of the Courts, does case law, or case load studies every couple of years on all the different circuits, and also some population analysis and things like that. And they put us, the Al Kove Circuit, as the fourth fastest growing circuit for the next five years. So we're aware of that. That means Newton, Walton County are gonna be growing not quite as fast as Forsyth County or Henry County, but and I know y'all were dealing with some of the growth issues as well. But obviously that affects our office to a certain extent, too. Since you guys provided that funding, and obviously so did the City of Covington, Monroe, and Newton, or sorry, Walton and Newton County, the person who had planned all along on putting in this gang and gun prosecution spot was ADA by the name of Alex Stone. Some of y'all may know her. She's from Walton County, grew up here, which I think is also a very good thing, because she's aware of, she knows a lot of people. She knows the community. She knows a lot of things about the area. She's been very, very, very busy. You know, here in Walton County, and I say all this, I don't I don't want to tell you these numbers and stats on these cases to scare anybody, because this is a great place to live. It really is. But there's some things that happen that we can do to make, and try to make things safer by holding people accountable when they commit some of these violent crimes. This is somebody who's not focusing on any sort of thefts or low-level offenses. These are shootings and drive-bys and things like that. I'll give you a couple of examples. I'm not gonna give any names. I'm also, as Mr. Dickinson knows, I'm under the rules of professional conduct for attorneys, and prosecutors have additional rules of professional conduct as far as speaking publicly about pending cases. I can't really give a whole lot of information as far as names, and other than that, I'm gonna give anything that's just public information, but we have a couple indictments involving gang activity here in Newton County. One is fifty-seven total counts involving four different incidents that were all shooting incidents with eleven different victims. Another indictment is twenty-six total counts with ten different victims. And I say that just with the victims, because that's honestly what we're focused on. Is there are people who, a lot of these victims are innocent bystanders. Some of these victims honestly are also charged in the other indictment, because they're shooting back and forth at each other, which can be a very dangerous thing for everybody in those areas. And that's the scary thing, is when there's people just sitting inside their home, watching TV, and bullets start flying into their house. That's a very scary thing. We also have a nine co-defendant case that was actually not in the city, it was actually out in the county, but that involved a number of individuals from Walton County, but also from Barrow County. That was sort of a similar thing, where there's people involved on both sides with guns, and things go very badly, and there's shots back and forth. One of those individuals is also charged up in Barrow County with a very large racketeering Rico gang indictments. He actually was released on bond for aggravated assault here, and is charged with, so he's allegedly, he's charged with murder in Barrow County while wearing his ankle monitor. There's also a, well, and so I add to that, I think also when I came before you guys previously, I told you that Department of Corrections also provides us with information as far as people being released on parole that are validated gang members. And that is across the entire gang spectrum. That's Gangster Recycles, Bloods, Crips, Aryan Brotherhood, Ghostface. The Aryan Brotherhood, we actually have a case, too, where somebody who's an Aryan Brotherhood member was in the Walton County jail trying to use, using recorded jail calls. As Mr. Dickinson, Dickinson can tell you, people love to use the recorded jail calls to confess things, but he was actually using it to try to put out hits on people in North Georgia from the jail. So our office was heavily involved in that. Obviously, the victim, we had to make sure North Georgia knew, the county up there knew about it, so we could make sure that person was okay, get law enforcement involved up there, and so they can kind of run with it as well, because the victim was receiving the phone calls up there. Our office, Alex has also been to a number of trainings, and also other the good thing about having a gang prosecutor is also you get to work with a lot of people in similar positions in other circuits. And that's been a great thing. The federal government in Athens has been very instrumental and very heavily involved in gang activity in Athens. And they have pretty regular meetings about what's going on in surrounding communities. And so she goes to those things. The Attorney General's Office, as you guys have probably seen in the news, the governor and Attorney General have pushed really hard about gang activity over the last few years. And so they've been heavily involved as well. They can assist on any sort of big prosecutions, which is good. Often, they end up, they have a big one down in South Georgia they're assisting on, because some of these DA's offices have like four prosecutors for five counties, and they just don't have the manpower to handle some of these big cases that we have. What I'm gonna say is a couple other things, is we're also trying to be involved and get some of the mock trial programs started back in some of the schools. That used to happen, where people would go do these mock trial competitions. And part of that is have my ADA's actually go teach that and be involved, because that has our you gotta be involved with some of the younger people, not just when they commit, when bad things happen, but on, you know, when good things are happening. And so that's why we want to do that as well. We had that four or five years ago in Newton County, and it kind of stopped. COVID didn't help a lot of those clubs at all. But also, I'm here to answer any questions, but also leave you with this, too, is that from what you guys can do, and everybody in this meeting can do, is often when somebody comes into my office with a case where they are using a gun, that's not something that we often can legally do a whole lot with. Somebody's shooting at somebody's house, there's some very serious punishment for that. You know, a very sad thing that we have to do sometimes is have a defendant's mother come into our office and is crying because her son robbed a store with a gun. They're facing a minimum bylaw of ten years in prison with that. You know, and you see, and it's sad. You have a mother who comes in and says, "I had no idea my son was involved in this sort of thing. There's no way my son did this." And we'll ask, like, "Have you seen your son's social media pages?" Because if you haven't, you should. Because all this stuff is on there. I say that as just anything you guys can do as community leaders to work with young kids is a helpful thing. I say that as that's one of the sad parts of this job, is once someone comes into my office, it's hard to do a whole lot, especially if you're using a gun. But things we can do to help the youth stay busy, stay out of trouble, anything we can do as a community is a good thing. So I'll leave you with that. I'm also here to answer any questions, or anything else y'all want to hear about.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Come on. I do. These guns, any of them bought legally?
Ah, originally, not the person committing the crime, if that's what you mean. No, it's rarely. And that's the issue we're running to, is there's been a lot of, here in Newton County, in the cities as well as the county, there's a lot of entering autos where people are, that's the thing, too, is to push, if people can just, don't leave your gun in your car. Take it inside when you go when you're home. People are just going around, they're jiggling door handles, and if someone opens a door, they find a gun, that gun's being used in other crimes. And that's, you know, I don't, he's retired, I don't say his name, but there was a certain chief of police, just a couple of police go down in Covington that just retired, who had his gun and badge stolen from his car, so he went home and just left his gun in his car. That's a scary thing. And that's what you're saying, is are these guns purchased legally? No, but they're, they're easily obtained. Some of the shootings we just had in Covington were that same thing, where people were just breaking into cars. And, you know, they, as, you know, Chief Watts can attest, I mean, some of these entering autos, you'll have thirty or forty in a night in a small area. And sometimes something's stolen, sometimes nothing's stolen, but that's, that's the hard part is, you know, if you can, and that's one thing I hope we can get out to the public, is take your guns inside, don't leave them in your car. It doesn't take long to break into a car.
Right. Well, thank you, Mr. McGinley. Any more questions? I appreciate your messages.
Well, thank y'all.
I hated to hear it.
I have a four and seven-year-old at home, so I am gonna leave y'all.
Yes, sir. Go do it.
Thank y'all.
And Randy, what, what time is Charlie on the radio in the morning?
Six AM.
Six AM on?
One oh two point one out of Athens.
One oh two point one out of Athens. Charlie in the morning. So y'all get up and listen to her.
Ten to twelve in the concentration in Athens, and ten to seven, be nine to five in Atlanta, so.
Thank you so much. Public comment, I do have a few here. Start with Mr. Ned Butler.
My name is Ned Butler. I'm representative of Reliant Homes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I've come to speak on two issues. First, there will be a first reading tonight of amendments to development regulations. I'd like to speak to about the proposed change to four point two point four regarding development permits. The proposal has a hard expiration date on land disturbance permits of eighteen months. The proposal, um, this does not take into consideration that not all developments are the same. Also, there are delays that occur with supply chain issues, laborability, and weather conditions that are outside the control of a developer. For this reason, we would ask to leave the permit so that it, that if the development is active, it does not expire, or give the city administration the ability to extend the permit if substantial work has occurred at their discretion. Secondly, we would ask the council to consider a way of addressing the current preliminary plat and final plat processes as it would pertain to phasing. We have a current example of a subdivision that we paid for power with Walton EMC in May of two thousand and twenty-two. As of the power being installed today, Walton EMC has five transformers to supply power to the subdivision. That will service nineteen of the hundred and five lots that we have. My understanding with the current process with the city is if we wanted to final plat the lots that we had could service power, the nineteen, we would need to submit a preliminary plat that showed a phase line and get that approved, and then come in for the final plat, and as transformers were added, try to do additional phasing. I don't want to do that, and I know the city doesn't want to do that process. So, another option, or look at other options of, can we get a final plat? What, Walton EMC installs all the power? They'll install cans instead of transformers, where they can't supply transformers, and just put holds on all permit, building permits for lots that cannot be serviced by power. And then release building permits once Walton EMC would supply power to those lots by transformers. We are doing this process currently with Walton County. That's how we're working around the process. And honestly, it's good for the city, because you'll get city taxes on the individual lot, rather than us waiting till whenever Walton EMC is able to locate their transformers to service all one hundred and five lots in the subdivision. Because we would like to start building before that date gets here. That's all I have. Thank you for your consideration in the two matters.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Appreciate you coming in. Andy Simms.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and esteemed members of City Council. My name is Andy Simms, and I'm here to express my support to keep the current city ordinance that permits restaurants to serve alcohol until one fifty-five AM. In nineteen thirty-three, President Roosevelt issued a proclamation regarding the new Twenty-first Amendment ratifying prohibition. Roosevelt confides his trust in the American people that they would, quote, "not bring upon themselves the curse of excessive use of intoxicating liquors to the detriment of health, morals, and social integrity." President Roosevelt expressed his trust in the American people, as does our very own mayor, who has said that that he trusts the individuals in our community to make responsible decisions. Last month, Councilman Dickinson, who owns Broad Street Tavern, commented on a crowd of younger, young adults entering his establishment from eleven to midnight, stating that these are the people that don't want this change. Allow me to elaborate who those people are. Those people are leaving their second jobs so they can pay rent due to the gentrification that's happening in our town. Those people pay taxes. Those people are our waitstaff, our kitchen staff. Those people service our town on a daily basis. Those people sometimes don't get out of work until eleven or twelve at night. Those people are the many young adults that couldn't make it here tonight, because they're currently working to feed our town. Those people deserve the freedom to get off work, relax, and enjoy their young adult lives. This amendment picks apart the integrity of our community that we are all here trying to preserve. Ms. Malcolm, you have said multiple times that we need to preserve the integrity of our community. Allowing those people, a generation that spends the majority of their time on their phones, to come out after work and actually socialize face-to-face, have a few drinks, laugh, and even dance, does just that. Preserve the integrity of our younger community, too. Kevin Bacon said it best in the movie Footloose, "This is our time." To play our music loud, to make mistakes, to live. Let's dance. Ms. Malcolm, I live in your district. I love almost everything you represent and fight for in our town. I have a lot of respect for you. But this amendment is just outlandish. Love and respect for young people begins where censorship and manipulation begin. Shifting last call would also affect current and future restaurants that rely on these late-night customers for a proportion of their revenue. Earlier this year, this very council voted to increase taxes on all businesses in the city. Now, you plan to single out the restaurants and cut our hours back as well. In the hour and twenty-five minutes this council is proposing to strip from our restaurants, the city is projected to lose significantly. With Will Henry's opening date just around the corner, the establishment of twenty-four twelve, the potential of Broad Street Tavern, and the thirsty moose in Taiwan On coming to town, our city is set to lose as much as a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in taxes just for this time change. There are other amendments in this ordinance, like the definition of a microbrewing distillery. The change from manufacturing five hundred barrels to ten thousand is being amended according to City Attorney Mr. Rosenthal, to mimic Georgia state law. I applaud that change. Follow state law. As a matter of fact, our current ordinance in regards to last call does just that. We follow Georgia Code Title III, Section three three seven, which in summary states, "In all consolidated governments of this state, the sale of alcoholic beverages is lawfully authorized at any time from eleven fifty-five on Saturdays and the two hours immediately following such times." What this says is that state law allows last call to be at one fifty-five every day except Sunday. So if you want to amend our ordinance to mimic state law, then leave this section alone. As a matter of fact, forty-two of the fifty states in our country allow last call to be one fifty-five or later. In conclusion, the potential negative consequences cannot be overlooked. Such a change would have a significant impact on businesses, individual freedoms, our economy, and community dynamics. Instead of limiting access to ask, to alcohol, I implore this council to instead focus on promoting responsible drinking through public awareness campaigns, continue to enforce existing laws, and ensure access to safe transportation options. By doing so, we can strike a balance between public safety and preserving the vibrant, the vibrant social fabric of our community. Thank you.
That was almost almost, you was five, you were like five oh eight. Thank you, Mr. Simms. Ed Lane.
Good evening.
Apologies for the misunderstanding. We were signing up to speak for a new business, not public comment, so myself and Bill Schmidt.
Okay, so we got you on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. So that takes off to Danny Clack. How are you, sir?
How are you, didn't I?
Good, thanks.
Mayor, City Council members, my name is Danny Clack, and I'm with Will Henry's Tavern. It's a little awkward for me to be here tonight to talk about the ordinance concerning the fact that we just received our alcohol license at the last meeting. However, I'd like to make a couple of comments regarding this issue. Number one, soon after we decided to open a place here in the city of Monroe, I met with two ladies that were involved in the Downtown Development Authority. At that time, a copy of the alcohol license was presented to me, and the current hours that are in place were the same as the two other locations that I'm involved in, one being in unincorporated Gwinnett County, and the second being in the city of Lawrenceville. While considering our cost to retrofit fitting a restaurant in the old Napa Auto Sales Building, we valued the current hours as essential. Our forecast was, for sales, was also based on the current hours. We are obviously making a major cash infusion to turn this building into a restaurant bar. Secondly, I believe a lot of our potential customers are being forgotten if a change in hours is approved. A vast number of people in this area do not get off work at four thirty-five or six o'clock. For example, cooks, waitstaff, bartenders, police officers, security personnel, they get off much later. They deserve to get the same benefits as people that get off early. They deserve to get to go out and get a bite to eat, have a drink, beer, a glass of wine, and unwind for the day. Please understand, these people deserve the same benefits that the rest of the citizens of the city of Monroe enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clack. I appreciate you coming in tonight. This is item, City Administrator Report, Mr. Probst.
I'll keep it brief. We have a lot to go through tonight, so if you haven't noticed, the town green is coming along exceptionally well. We're about ninety-nine percent complete with construction. We have some punch list stuff to do, and then we've got to set up the audio, video, cameras, all that stuff out there, so I think it looks great. Hopefully, it'll be a tremendous asset for this community. Also note, we have finalized construction of the Dr. Kenneth Grubbs Terminal Building out at the airport. If you haven't been by there, it's not a huge terminal like you would find in a Hartfield Jackson, but we're proud of our own little terminal out there. Right now, we're outfitting the building, and so it'll be open within probably a couple of months for, for use. You also notice Walton Road sidewalks are being installed. That's, we're trying to do that to get ahead of the resurfacing that's coming up as part of the L-Meg program. We talked about that last month. And then, very soon, we'll be resurfacing the rear parking lot of the library to enhance that parking situation back there, make it a little bit more attractive and user-friendly for all of our visitors to all of our wonderful restaurants.
And lighting, will that be added as well?
We will look at some, some lighting enhancements there as well, absolutely. We have plenty more, but I don't want to waste everybody's time tonight. We have a lot to do.
Are there any questions for Logan? Hearing none. You all received Chris Bailey's update for the Assistant City Administrator Report. Logan touched on a few of these. But if you have any questions, comments, we have airport sidewalk rehab, Matthews Park, TDA, Pilot Park Community Garden. I do want to mention, many of you know Elizabeth Jones. She is by that Pilot Park Garden. Every day, she brought in vegetables for our customer service team last week that she picked out of the garden, so swing by there, do a little watering, do a little weeding, and grab a tomato or something. Have at it. Lumpkin Alleyway improvements are on the way, entrance signage. You mentioned library parking. We've got equipment, and then some visitor center updates. Everybody good with those? You have any questions? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to department requests. Chief Watts?
Thank you, Mayor. What I'm bringing before the council tonight for approval is our annual renewal of the SRO contract with Monterey High School, George Walton Academy in Foothills. And I'll answer any questions if you should have any.
Any questions for Chief Watts? I'll move approval. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gregory, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Back to you, chief.
It was all of them.
I went ahead and hit all three of them at the same time, Mayor.
Can we do that, Paul?
Yes, that's totally fine. They're all the same.
Thank you. New business, conditional use of one thirteen North Broad Street. Mr. Callender?
Mr. Mayor, there is a conditional use request in front of City Council this evening for a retail wine store. As y'all are aware, currently in your ordinance, retail wine sales, retail beer sales, they are a conditional use in the central business district. The request before you is for retail wine sales. It will happen in, at one thirteen North Broad Street, inside of a loft space inside of the Monroe Mercantile Building. And this will be a part of an operation that will also have other items for sale, including olive oil, spices, breads, and other baked goods. They want to include wine sales with this request. On the screen behind you is a photograph of the loft space now, as it currently exists, to be leased. And the Planted Commission has made their recommendation, its approval as submitted without any conditions. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Callender. Any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this rezone or conditional use? Conditional use? Well, come on up. In your name, please, ma'am.
My name is Adrian Vines. We are looking to bring to Monroe a very similar operation that is in Covington now, the Town Square Olive Oil shop, they're on, on their square. We're actually partnering with them to bring the oils. Part of the operation does include wine sales, and a very big portion of what we do is offer tasting, so that you can actually taste the wines, the oils, everything we have in the store. You can come in a sample before you buy it. So it's not just a shopping experience, it's a tasting experience. The ability to sell wine is a portion of what we are doing. It is not a bar. You cannot walk in, you cannot purchase a glass of wine. It's simply a sample of what we offer, and then you purchase the bottle itself. I know that our licensing will include beer. At this time, we don't really have any plans to offer beer purchases. Other than that, I mean, is there, is there anything I can answer?
I think you're good right now, but I appreciate your explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak in favor of this conditional use? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak against this conditional use? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we'll be back to revisit that in just a couple of minutes. Moving to the rezone seven oh seven South Madison, is that correct? Rezone at seven oh seven South Madison. Mr. Callender?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This rezone request is for a rezone from R2 to PRD. The project is located at the northeast corner of South Madison Avenue and Nora Street. It's a point five non-acre property that they are proposing to do the planned residential development for a total of five residences. And this is an example of the council's decision to remove the barriers to planned district rezones to have no acreage minimum to them, so this is a point five non-acre request for PRD. They are proposing a total of five lots. The houses will range roughly in thirteen hundred eighty square feet to sixteen hundred square feet in size, with lot sizes that will be down to twenty-five hundred square feet, up to fifty-three hundred square feet. This is a unique request, as in the lots themselves, the ones that are on the south side of the site, they'll be accessed from an individual driveway off of South Madison Avenue, and the homes will face Nora Street. There's an existing home that's in the northwest corner of the property that will continue to face South Madison Avenue. That'll be incorporated as its own lot in the development, and then there'll be one additional home in the northeast corner of the site. All the lots will be accessed from a private access drive, and they do propose to include some common areas and gathering spaces that will be for the residences on these lots. The Historic Preservation Commission has already approved their representative architectural styles for these homes, and the appearances of those homes have been approved by HPC. And the Planted Commission has made their recommendation, approval as submitted without any conditions for this request, Mr. Mayor. That's all that I have.
Great. Thank you, Brad. Are there any questions for Mr. Callender? Hearing none, I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here, is the developer here? Hello, Ms. Volk. Would you like to come up and say hello?
Good evening. My name is Lori Volk. I had intended-
I had intended to summarize this, exactly what Brad had said. He does such a better job at it than I did. So I'm available for questions if anybody has any.
I don't think we're going to have any, but sit tight.
Okay.
Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak in favor of this rezone? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against the rezone? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll come back to revisit in just a few minutes, okay? Moving to Development Regulations Text Amendment Number Seven, Mr. Callender?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proposed amendment to your development regulations. Just make sure it's going in and out. This is a proposed amendment to your development regulations to one section specifically, Section 4.2.4. It's a pretty vague and difficult language to interpret, and this section is regarding development permits and their expirations. Currently, the language now reads in a number of different ways, but staff is left to interpret it in only one way that it can be handled. Currently, it's written in a way that would say that land disturbance permits expire within 12 months, with only one possible extension for three months that can be granted by the code enforcement officer. There's also some other language inside the current language of the requirement itself that's nonsensical and is difficult to interpret. So the proposal is, is to change the expiration of development permits from 12 months to 18 months with no extension granted with that, but we're expanding the timeframe to 18 months, and then we're also clarifying the language within which an automatic expiration would occur. So if you recall back on January 10th, we had clarified the language for preliminary plat expirations, and that language was specifically tied to the expiration of a land disturbance permit or site development plans. And in that, we expanded the preliminary plat to be valid for one year, and within that one year, the developer would have to obtain a land disturbance permit or a final plat. If they did none of those things, that preliminary plat would expire. That language also included the attachment to the site development plan expiration, and that extends the life of the preliminary plat to be carried with the site development plans, and it would be active as long as the land disturbance permit was active. So to be clear, the current language is very vague. It says 12 months, and then the sentence that follows the 12 months, it says that we can grant a three-month extension. It's not clear what date that is attached to, the 12 months, some nebulous date that doesn't exist. It's not clear at all. And then the LDP expires automatically with one month, and one month where the lapse in development activity, as it's currently written. So for our modification, what we're proposing to do is to extend the LDP's life to an 18 months after issuance. We're basically giving three more months to an LDP. We're also going to clarify that if no development activity occurs, then the development permit will expire if they do no activity whatsoever within six months. And then we're going to increase that lapse in development activity expiration from one month essentially to 45 days. What does this do for developments? So basically, a proposed timeline for developments that are submitted to the city council after preliminary plat, they'll have a year to obtain an LDP, order their transformers, order their materials, and get an LDP granted to them within 365 days of that preliminary plat. And once that LDP is granted, developers will have an additional 18 months, based on this expiration language we're creating, to complete the development. So essentially, from the time a preliminary plat is approved by this city council, the maximum time to obtain a final plat will be 30 months. And right now, it's short of that, I think it's, if we go by the language now, it's roughly 24 months, if I'm not mistaken. That is the proposed amendment. To clarify this language, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Callender. Appreciate it. Any questions for Brad?
Is this the same thing Mr. Butler was speaking on earlier? And I guess my only question would be, the way you just clarified it, Brad, you know, went through it, how does that affect Mr. Butler's situation with his transformers?
I'm happy to answer that question now.
Yes, sir, please.
Okay. So I can't speak to that development's issues with the transformers. I'll be perfectly honest with you, that development technically has already begun its development. And in fact, I believe it was October of 2021, we granted the land disturbance permit, and we just expired that development in May of 2023. So they've been in development and should have technically ordered their transformers in October of 2021. And that's before your issues with the delays in getting the materials here kind of came up in January 2022. If you recall, Brian Thompson sat there and gave some descriptions of that, I guess in December of 2021, when the moratorium was enacted. That was due to supply chain issues. I can't speak to their specific issues with not getting the number of transformers they need. I know that we've had other developments in the city who've made their orders and received them inside of the timeframe. That development has been granted its approval, and they have their transformers ordered. So I don't know what the situation is for that development specifically and why they don't have the number of transformers they need to complete their phase of development.
Thank you, Brad. Any other questions or comments, Lee?
I mean, we can't speak for Walton EMC, but you know what the holdup is with them? Why is it that we can get transformers and they can't?
That's difficult to answer. I don't know.
I don't know all the facts on that, but it's my understanding Walton EMC uses only one type of transformer, whereas we use a variety of different transformers. So I think it has something to do with the bottleneck of their own specific transformer.
It seems like we're extending it longer than we had, and there's, well, no, there's no extension, but they still have a few months longer. Is that correct?
That's essentially what we're building into this requirement now. And staff's idea to take it from 12 to 18 just seemed reasonable.
Okay.
What is your feeling on what the county has done by allowing them to go ahead and place the boxes without the transformers in the box, but to go ahead and start building? What can we look at as a deterrent there?
I'm not familiar with that approach at all.
Ned mentioned that.
I'm not familiar with that approach at all. That seems harmful without a final plat.
So Brad, can you touch on why we need to have this process to begin with?
Well, yeah.
That's the crux of the question there.
I think so. I mean, there has to be finality to a permit that's issued. I mean, as you recall, it wasn't so long in the distant past where you had an economic crash that forced developments that were in motion that would actually disturb land had come to a full stop, and in order to correctly stabilize those sites, there has to be at least an end to a process. So this expiration assures the council that if someone starts a development and they walk away for whatever reason, there will be consequences to that action, that they have to restabilize the site. And to further explain, I think what Logan was wanting me to get to is that the reason why we want finality to the land disturbance permit is that this isn't just a house permit, that we're not granting a permit for a home on a lot that exists. This involves your installation of infrastructure, stormwater management areas, roads that will be dedicated to this council, and I think the most important feature is that you want to make sure that those remain active, and they're still being inspected by the city's staff members, so that when they are being dedicated to the city, they are going to be of, I guess, an appropriate form for public dedication, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
If I can just add one quick thing, part of this also is not just changing the times, it's also cleanup. I don't want to get into any specifics, but we've had several legal issues over the past year about some of this language. Some of this is cleaning up and tightening it up, because specifically that language in the red, there's been a lot of ambiguity and legal fights, if you will, over that issue. So it's also that. Going to the question about the cans, I mean, I'll just tell you, and again, I can't speak to some specifics, but we have some files that we've dealt with on this, and the issue there is, we don't want to take approval of any final plats until everything's in the ground, excepting only certain unique circumstances where a performance bond, a future performance bond, makes sense, whether it be top coating or something. But that discretion rests with your code office, with code enforcement officer, whether or not it's appropriate to allow a performance bond. But our regs say now, and we need to stick to that otherwise, right? Remember the pipe farm world that we all lived through? It says that we're not going to take these plats, we're not going to take these roads, we're not going to accept that final plat until everything's in the ground the way it needs to be, whether it's Mr. Ned with Reliant, who we know are great local builders or all that, or anybody. The issue that we've dealt with is if we look back to the crash, we're trying to prevent anything happening like that again, where we're not going to take on roads where we don't have final top coats, because we have some of those still around in this town today that we own the roads and the tops didn't get put on. So it's also just that issue, not only a finality, but making sure that you all don't take ownership of infrastructure that's not finished.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Any other questions, Brad or Paul? Hearing none, I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak in favor of these text amendments? Do we have anyone who would like to speak against these text amendments? I believe Mr. Butler's comments stand on their own. Does anybody have any questions of Ned? I won't mind asking that. Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll be back to revisit that in just a few minutes. Back to you, Brad, for Code Text Amendment Number 17, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is zoning amendment number 17. I'll be brief. These are just a few amendments to your ordinance. So we're proposing under Section 620, this is your commercial zoning district land use table. We are proposing to add the land use categories related to the alcohol ordinance amendments that are being proposed to council now. This is including them in your land use ordinance, so we actually can identify where in the city they should be allowed. The first table, though, is only categorizing them and placing them in the commercial districts. We're not actually making them allowed by right. They're just being added for clarity to make the beer and wine retail store current use to have its own language beside it. We're also making tattoo parlors allowed by right in B3, for whatever reason it was removed from our ordinance at some point in the past. The next modification is to your industrial land use table, the M1 district. This is Section 630. We are adding the entire collage of the same exact alcohol uses that I just described. They're also being added to the M1 district. But in this one specifically, the brewers and distilleries that are currently described in your code of ordinances under the alcohol licensing, this is where they will be permitted based on that licensing. So we're proposing that they be placed here in M1, so it's clear that they are a land use allowed in that district. We're also proposing to remove the general residential category from the M1 district. This is related to issues that the council has just seen recently regarding some vagueness of what types of land uses residentially should be in the M1 district. The next amendment's very brief. This is regarding allowing stucco within our corridor design overlay district. Currently, you allow stucco, but not including ephes. Ephes is probably a material that is better suited. These days, it's produced better, and really can't tell the difference between looking at it in stucco, and it's easier to maintain. We're going to let that be an allowed material use by striking the word "not" in the corridor design overlay district material section. And additionally, on this page that's on the screen behind you, we're modifying the garage requirements for envelope overlay districts to exactly match the wording for the garage requirements the council approved earlier this year. We've taken that exact language from Section 910 and placed it in there in this section, so they both have the identical language. It's easier to enforce. Moving on to the CBD land use table, this is the third change related to the alcohol land uses. We're clarifying the language regarding those uses and making brew pubs and the microbreweries and distilleries as a permitted use by right in the central business district. We're also adding that tattoo parlor language back in there that was removed some time ago. Moving on to Section 820, this was the addition to the land use code that we had this past springtime regarding requiring new developments to be zoned to a planned district. We're adding some language to this to clarify for those developments that may opt into something smaller or not have to go through a planned district requirement. So we're going to specifically add language to this that says that they have to be greater than five units in size. Currently, you have a number of properties in the city that can be subdivided one or two or three times. That would be punitive based on the language written now. They would have to go through a planned district if they wanted to subdivide. So we're making that clear, that if it's five units or more, then they could go through the administrative process for division. And then we've added in a language that says that if it's an IOD development or an MHDO development, which you have standards for now, that they could opt into that development instead of having to go through a planned district rezone. And the final proposed amendment is we're going to allow accessory dwelling units by right for any single-family residents in the city regardless of its zoning. Currently, there's some bad language in your land use table charts that some of them are conditional, some of them are prohibited, some of them are allowed, and in the language you already have adopted inside Article 10, they should be something that's permitted by right as a single-family resident. So we're clarifying that language and saying that any single-family residents in the city, regardless of its zoning, may have an ADU based on the current rules you already have in place. Those are the proposed amendments. Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
It was easy enough?
No, it sure was.
Any questions for Brad?
I have one on the M1 removing the residential.
Yes, sir.
How would that affect the approval we gave last month?
It would have no impact on that approval. That conditional use permit would stand as it was approved by city council.
But if that came back again, would that not be allowed because of this?
This would make it a non-conforming use.
I'm sorry?
It would make it a non-conforming use.
And can you explain the rationale behind that of why?
Well, if, I don't have all the land use tables, it would be easier to explain if I could run through those land use tables, so I'll do my best to explain that. So the category that you have in M1 now is a general category of residential. That is not your specific residential land uses. You have single-family, single-family attached, detached, duplex, townhome, lofts. I don't know them all off the top of my head. They are all specifically identified as being land uses within your table now, whether they're permitted or not permitted in a certain zoning district. This is just a general category of all those land uses. And I'll give you a specific example. In your commercial land use table, I believe it's apartments, they're allowed by right in like B2, B3, but they're conditional. And like the P District, I think there was a request here before council last year that was a conditional use for that. Those are specific land uses. This is a non-specific land use category and really opens the door to any residential type being allowed in M1, when you currently restrict them in various other forms in other districts.
Would they be grandfathered in by we approved it last month?
It would be an illegal non-conforming use.
Are there any questions, any other questions for Mr. Callender? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this text amendment? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against text amendment? Hearing no public input, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. No actions taken at the moment. We'll be back to revisit in just a few seconds. Moving to traffic pattern change, that's where we are, right?
I think so. All right, traffic pattern change. This is over in the Davis Street, Church Street area. We've just taken a look at how things have built out over the past few years since we made the original change of making one-way streets on Millage, kind of south from Church to Davis, and then Colley, one-way from Davis to Church, and then Bell Street has remained a two-way street, even though it's the smallest street at 11 feet wide. But with all the development down through there and just anecdotally watching it, I think it would probably be best if we leave Millage one-way southbound from Church to Davis. It has a 15-foot width. Change Colley back to a two-way street, because it has a 20-foot width, and it's mostly built out now, and Bell Street still has a little bit of activity to develop on, and make that a one-way north from Davis to Church. Now, I would recommend, let's have another public hearing next month, so that we give everybody plenty of opportunity to express their concerns or ask questions. So have it on tonight, but I would ask that it be reconsidered again next month.
I think that's acceptable. Any questions for Logan, any comments? Basically, we're just changing Colley to Bell. Colley's water.
Yes.
Okay. I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of these street pattern changes? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? We'll do this all again next month, so you all go drive around and then come back. I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll be back to revisit again next week. Moving to Southview Drive cul-de-sac proposal, Mr. Probst.
All right, same thing here. I want to give ample notice and...
Is it a week? Next month, sorry.
I want to give ample notice and do another public hearing, so everybody has time to get their questions answered. So basically, Walton County... So basically, Walton County has approached me about implementing a cul-de-sac at the end of Southview Drive. You know, there's a little hairpin turn at the end of it where it runs into Highway 78. And what they're proposing is adding a public safety access road that would run from 78, the current intersection of Southview and 78, back down to Baker Street where it would run into the new jail public safety complex. The county would be developing that street network all on their own. They would pay for the cul-de-sacking of it. I know it's been a frequent complaint that's reached City Hall several times over the years that there's a lot of cut-through traffic, especially since construction has started out there. They really don't want cut-through traffic for the new jail and public safety complex coming through Southview and back through that residential area. So I don't see a huge issue with it. I think it'll relieve a lot of the pressure right there. There probably will not be a signalized intersection at 78 right there. DOT said it's obvious it's too close to the Spring Street on-ramp, but there may be something like an R-cut or something like that that would allow left turns from 78 back onto the new public safety road, which is currently Southview Drive. So all that say, that's the information there. We have the information in our packets on the agenda on the website. But if there's any questions, just reach out to us here at City Hall, and we'll do the best we can to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Logan?
I do have a question. I want to make sure that we clarify for the folks in that neighborhood. I've met with those folks a number of times about the traffic issues over there. So do we have a map we can put up that clarifies how this new street that the county proposes would intersect with Baker?
Yes, I'll have to get that from the county, but they do have one. I have seen...
Okay, because we need, my folks need to see that.
I can get that.
Okay, so can we have that next month?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can we have any tic-ta-itis, no more government buildings? I mean, we tend to be getting a lot of those from the county. I think we need to address it. Any other questions for Logan? Hearing none, and we'll do this again next month. I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of... Come on up.
See, I'm waiting for my chance.
Well, I've been hoping.
I see so many of my neighbors here. I'm the neighborhood busybody.
Okay.
My name's Henry Harbuck. I'm not in favor or against the closure or the cul-de-sac. I know there's some here that are against it. I know there's some here that are for it. I know some of you cut through my road. I'm sure you do. My house is the one with the antique tractor, right at Southview and Baker, right on the corner. The old crack house that I spent $40,000 fixing up and making it nice. And now y'all, the county, going to put a road bam right beside me and ruin my beautiful view. Okay, I don't care about stop and progress. It's no problem, whatever, right? All good. I'm on board. The cul-de-sac would be good in one way. I have my house and my son's house and my father, my son's in-law's house, so I have three houses in that neighborhood. Yeah, the traffic blows through there. Some people will make that turn on Baker, and they'll hit it. I mean, they'll get 75, 80 miles an hour. They try to get as fast as they can before they get to Olympia. I call the police all the time. They've been in my house looking at my surveillance cameras, hitting trees, running in ditches, all these types of things. Personally, I don't want to make my neighbors mad. I'd love to see it closed. I hate it. My house got struck by lightning last night, so I haven't had any internet or TV for the last 24 hours. So I've been sitting on the porch watching all the cars just drive by. None of them are from our neighborhood. So great, close it. I know there's people that don't want to close it. I get that. If you live on Bolton or Pierce, it's going to be very inconvenient, and that's fine. I understand. But you ain't closing it for us, you closing it for the county. I really would like to know where this thing's going to tie in at, because I don't see no way. I saw the picture. You got that one picture at Southview and 78. I know Mr. Parker is drawing up the plans now. I got emails. I went and talked to the county. They've been very nice to me, been very forthcoming. I give them praise. They're not hiding anything from me. They said they're going to try to put Baker as much in, the old Baker fields, well, Mr. Baker didn't, you know, they belong to the conservatory. All that land was in the conservatory. So they're going to try to push Baker over some and be in the fields, not to impact us that live on Southview or Baker. I really hope you get that picture, because I got anxiety, you know? I'm not a rich man.
Well, we're going to get it, because that's the whole issue, how they're going to tie in or if they're going to tie in at all. If they're just going to run it straight into the government complex...
That would be great.
And not into the current Baker, I think that's a really good thing.
I know Mr. Baker is here. I saw him back there. I don't know what he wants to do, but, you know, if they want to take it up close to the old subdivision behind Mr. Baker's house and run it directly into the complex, then what reason would anybody have to come down there to try to shortcut through my neighborhood? None. So that would be great for me, but I'm only speaking for me, even though I'm the busybody in the neighborhood.
No, we appreciate it, because we want to hear everybody's opinions.
There's no way you can, like the wording, I read the wording in this PDF, and it says, "tie in to the end of Baker." There ain't no way you can do that. My house is in the way. You're going to have to buy me out, and I don't want to take pennies, you know, because I'm not a rich person. So, but there's just no way unless you shift the road over. And then if you shift the road, oh, well, here's another beautiful idea. If you do this, if you kill us in this neighborhood, it's called Pine Valley Neighborhood, right? Is anybody else going to speak? I don't know, but, okay. We have a great little quiet neighborhood there, except for people blowing through there all the time. Now you're putting a jail really close to us. But guess what? The county has acquired all this land, and they're trying to get to 55 acres behind me. They ain't got it yet, but everything else they got. Whoa, man, let's put a green space there. Let's put a park in there. Let's put a nature trail. You got the land. You can't develop it because it was in a conservatory. You've got to wait so many years before you can develop it. So give us a park for the whole town. Neighbors? Y'all want to argue with me, that's fine.
Do understand, we don't have it.
I know, you don't got nothing to do with it, but everybody in Walton County shakes hands and plays nice and eats chicken together.
No, we don't. We've been fighting them over this for a long time.
Well, work on that. I don't know, okay? I'm being a little facetious, but...
I'm telling you. No, no.
I wanted it in the public rec. Look, I'm putting my name out here, you know, already ahead of the thing, because that's what the county told me. They're still doing the plans. There ain't nothing finalized as what they told me.
True.
So they said, look, get out there, get in front of it, you know, we can work on it. And that's what I, I mean, I know, I know everybody in the, in Pine Valley Neighborhood would love to see that field done something with, or leave it alone, you know what I mean? We definitely don't want to see a housing complex over there, but you're putting a jail right there beside us. You're going to increase traffic in our neighborhood most likely on Baker Street. I don't want to speak for Mr. Bennett here. Mr. Bennett's house is 38 feet from Baker Street right now. My house will be 18 feet if it goes straight from Baker. That's no good. All right, I said enough. I'm sorry.
No, no, you were great, and I appreciate your comments. And is Henry Harbuck?
Yes, but don't blame my son, because his name is the same. He lives on Rees Street. I live on Southview.
We'll make sure we say senior.
Senior, that's right.
All right, thank you so much for your comments. Since that was neither for nor against, is there anyone here who would like to speak for? Yes, ma'am. If you don't mind, please. And your name?
Robin Peters.
Thank you, Ms. Peters.
Been on Southview Drive for 32 years. Don't plan to go anywhere. If you can close the entrance onto 78 tomorrow, it would just make me the happiest woman ever. We got so much traffic, speeders, everything on our street. Now, I hate it for the people who don't agree with that, but I'm sorry, I live on Southview Drive. I deal with this every day. I've backed out of my driveway and almost been hit by cars coming around the curve. I've also almost been hit by cars not stopping at the stop sign down at the end of Southview and Baker. It's very dangerous, but to put a cul-de-sac there is perfect. Do it tomorrow, or this evening afterwards. That's all I got.
Thank you so much, Ms. Peters. I appreciate you coming in. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of cul-de-sac? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against?
Let me just note for the record, so to answer Mr. Dickinson's question, Pierce, Bolton, Rees, the county has said they all want, they do want to make sure that they have appropriate access back to this new street so that they can get 78 easily. They don't want to create interference there, and they will work with us on the design of how that should intersect with Baker Street. So I just want to clarify that.
Okay, I want to see the plan.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Thank you, Logan. I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we'll be back to revisit next month. You good, Paul? Moving to new businesses, an application of spirituous liquors and beer and wine on-premise consumption at the Thirsty Moose. Mr. Pedezal here? You're probably just standing right there. Is this application in order?
Yes, that application is in order, Mayor.
Thank you. Unless anybody has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve?
A motion to approve by Mr. Garrett. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thanks for coming in, we are so excited. Moving to the conditional use at 113 North Broad Street, I'll open the floor to council members only for discussion, to allow retail sales of wine and potentially beer in the B2 zoning district. Is there any comment, question, or motion?
I move to approve.
A motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the rezone of 707 South Madison Avenue, I'll open this to the members of council only for discussion. Are there any questions or comments?
I just really want to say thank you for putting the green space behind the existing home to the left of your property. As I read it, that's where your green space will be. And that's great. Thank you, and it looks awesome.
Mayor, I just have one...
Yes, sir.
...clarification we need to get. The application, and I apologize, I didn't get with Brad on this ahead of time, but the application is a little inconsistent, and we just need to be clear. These are going to have to be condo-based ownership, because there's one of the houses that does not have legal road frontage. So these units will have to be sold, at least at a minimum, that one unit will have to be sold as condo. So the application indicates that there's going to be a condominium ownership structure, but then later down it says fee simple lots. The back lot in the back corner does not have legal road frontage, so the only way they're going to be able to do this as platted or designed would be with condominium ownership. Still can absolutely do it, still can do it PRD, still can sell the lots, no big deal, but they're going to have to do a declaration of condominium, or they're going to have to eliminate that back-corner house, which I'm sure they probably don't want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Bruce, you good with that? Have you all talked about this? Can we approve it while you still need to do some discussions, or...
It would just simply be approved for PRD zoning, subject to the fact that the ownership of the houses would need to be pursuant to a declaration of condominium. It's not difficult for them to do, it's the right way to do it in this situation. But otherwise, that back corner, if I can't, let's see if I can zoom in, I can tell you which lot it is. It's the one that's not fronting on either Norris or South Madison.
It's behind the green...
Lot number four would be an illegal lot.
Okay.
So again, the reason why I may have got missed at the beginning is, is that the application says condominium use, but then deeper in the application, it says that they'll be owned fee simple, which means each individual owner owns the four corners of their dirt. The appropriate legal ownership structure for this would be a declaration of condominium.
All of them? They'd all have to be considered condominium?
That would be the way that, if I were building it or anyone else is building it, that's the way that it should be built, and you don't have to. You could build it, I mean, we could get really weird and do it this way. Existing house could be owned fee simple. The corner, lot number one, number two, and number three could be owned fee simple. They could all have, they could all have CCRs for access of ingress and egress to the common areas, and then you could do a declaration of condominium for a singular lot, lot number four, but that would not be advisable, because the whole purpose of a condominium is to allow for fee simple ownership essentially with an undivided interest in the common elements.
And really...
It's very common and traditional.
Really, there would be no undivided common elements or common areas, except...
The parking area and the two green spaces. The condominium, what you call individual owner condominium parcels, would be the lots, lot one, lot two, lot three, lot four, lot five. And then the one-fifth, each property owner would own a one-fifth undivided interest in the common elements, which is essentially the driveway and the two common green spaces. It's the right legal way to do it. Otherwise, they have to lose lot four, because your development regs do not allow illegal lots or lots that don't have legal road frontage.
Right. You okay? Okay. Yes, sir.
So this is a planned district, and they're creating their own standards. They're accessing that lot from an easement.
Correct, but even still...
Okay.
Even still, I agree completely. It's a PRD, they can do anything they want to, they can change it all up, but if they're going to sell it fee simple, they don't have legal access. It's going to be illegal lot. Because you're developing, because the PRD, and look, I know these folks are going to build it great, they're going to do a great job, it's all going to work, but the PRD zoning is going to modify, PRD zoning is going to modify your zoning regulations to their custom zoning. PRD zoning is not going to modify your development regs.
I only have one question. Then the Madison PRD, that's exactly what they did. They have lots that are accessed only from an access easement only. That development was its own, established its own regulations, they followed the same pattern.
Well, then we need to dig into that.
They do. You're right.
They followed, they basically used the same template from Madison PRD to create those lots. Those are accessed only from an access easement, because they were allowed to create their own standard.
Yeah, no, I get it.
And this actually has much better parking and ingress and egress than the other one.
It's not about that, because see, then you've got, then you've got a title insurability, because, because your title policy is going to issue saying that there is legal access from a street. Otherwise, you've got to get a access easement endorsement to that title policy and all sorts of things. And I don't know that the, I know the project you're talking about, the Madison PRD, I don't know that those policies are issuing with access endorsement easements, because that's, it's also, it's a title insurability thing. People are scared of the terminology of condominium. Condominium is not a bad thing. It is a different legal way to own property. It's all it is. It's not apartments, it's not something bad, you don't own it, it's just, and Mr. Brad and I, and this is my apologies for not seeing this, Mr. Brad and I can get together on this issue, and if Madison PRD is different and y'all want to treat it the same, it's Mr. Brad and I can get together on this issue, and if Madison PRD is different, and y'all want to treat it the same, it's fine. But the, the right way to split this ownership up is a condominium.
Okay.
But I'll defer to you guys, it's totally y'all's choice.
Well
It creates a problem.
Let's do this.
Do I guess we need to table it?
No.
You don't have to table it, you can, you can rezone it, you can rezone it, subject to the issue of the ownership structure being qualified and clarified with the planning department. And the developer in our office. And if they can do it with the PRD without fee simple, then he can approve the plat that way and let them go. And if not, then we can work with them and help them, get them to the right lawyer that can do a declaration of condominium.
So, so we're approving the PRD as a condominium, in the event that you don't have to go that route, can we just leave it as?
I would just zone it.
No, I don't think that's
Yeah, just make a motion, if somebody wants to rezone it, make a motion to zone it to PRD, subject to the issue of the structure of ownership being worked out between the development office, the planning office, and the developer in our office. And again, we're not trying to monkey this up or make it difficult for them, we're really not, we're just trying to make sure and get it right.
So, as Mr. Rosenthal just mentioned, do you just want to say some move?
I'm ready to make that motion.
Okay.
I make that motion.
Sorry, David, thank you. And a motion by Mr. Dickinson and a second by Ms. Malcolm. And is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say that even though we have witnessed some of the issues that we might run into as we're going into new projects in this town, I think this is a fantastic opportunity for us. I think this is exactly the kind of project we're looking for, and I hope that anybody else who's out there who's trying to do this kind of thing doesn't get, you know, worried about this or hampered down by this kind of thing. As we grow and as we work through these issues, this is just a part of it. So thanks very much for being willing to do this kind of project, and for sticking with us as we work through it, we really appreciate it.
And your work's awesome, all y'all go buy something, buy something from him. That passes, so way to go, thank you. Moving to preliminary plat, Bell Street subdivision, Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Smooth through some of these slides here, then I'll get to my presentation. The preliminary plat request before city council this evening, this is on a property located on Davis Street and Bell Street. It's three existing lots, one of them, one of the lots on the south side of the property was recently created by a minor split. So they've exhausted their minor splitting ability, they want to subdivide an additional lot. And all of these properties qualify for your MFL overlay district requirements. So they're proposing a preliminary plat in front of city council for four lots to meet your IOD requirements. And the two, there's two existing homes on the lots that face Davis Street, they're proposing to subdivide two properties on Bell, where they would construct new residences. The recommendation is approval as submitted without corrections, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar, are there any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Dickinson to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now, before we move to the next thing, I had a motion and a second in the discussion, Tyler decided to go rogue on me there for a minute.
You asked for comments.
I'm sorry, so, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that really did pass. All right, moving to preliminary plat at Brooklyn Commons, Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a preliminary plat that was approved by the city council, I have my note right in front of me, it was some time ago, back in July of 2021. And developers gone out, made changes to the site, but their development permits have expired. So they're back in front of city council to re-activate their preliminary plat, which will enable them to get a new LDP tomorrow, to get this development going again. This is, just to recap, this is a 43-acre site, had 142 lots, and had 98 single-family detached homes in those lots with 44 townhomes. This preliminary plat is identical to the one council has already approved, this is just re-establishing their ability to move forward with their land commissioner's permit to obtain a final plat. The recommendation is approval as submitted without corrections, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, are there any questions for Brad? Do we know what took them so long?
I'll let the applicant speak to that, if that would be appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Will Schmidt McKinley Homes, we waited for power for 14 months, and we can't submit final plats until that was completed.
Okay.
And, you know, just talking to that, just briefly, we waited like three months to get the design of the power. And then we paid $260,000 to Walton, and didn't get transformers for over 12 months.
Okay, but we're pretty much back on go on a
Yeah, we're ready, we were anxious to get back out there.
Thank you for coming in, I appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes, took a minute to get the second, but you're good to go, thank you. Moving to first reading of development regulations, text amendment number seven, are there any questions regarding this ordinance?
I guess I still have the same question I asked earlier, based on, this is the one when Mr. Butler spoke, is there any leadway in here to grant an extension under the kind of circumstances he just discussed?
Yeah, so, we have batted back and forth, some level of administrative approval for things like transformers that don't arrive, right? Or water meters that we can't supply, things of that nature. Now, that would be more of a legal question for Mr. Paul over there, but what we're also trying to do is remove all the ambiguity out of this text. And it doesn't leave it open-ended, or sitting in my chair, or code officer's chair, Brad's chair. So, we were trying to come up with something that's clear-cut, here's your rules. Now, if it's 18 months, maybe we make it 24 months. Does that help move the needle in the situation? If things are really taking 24 months plus the LDP, we probably all have bigger problems than, than just that timeline.
I guess I'm trying to address exactly what Brad talked about earlier, is we don't want to go through the things that people are deserting properties.
Right.
And we need to have very specific things to keep that from happening, and I totally agree with that. But if something's actively involved, that's different from deserting a property to me, I guess that's where I'm trying to see if we have leadway, if people are still, if the developers are actively involved in the development. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but
Mr. Mayor, may I provide some, some help with Logan's response to Mr. Butler's question? So I think to this 18-month issue is that if a developer is facing the near expiration of their permit, they simply need to reapply their preliminary plat to re-activate their LDP. Which is basically what we just did here a few moments ago, except there's been some extended time and other things that have gone on with that project specifically. But if someone's actively developing a site, and they're in month 16, and they know they are not going to get a final plat submitted to the city, simply reapply your preliminary plat for reapproval. And we'll reissue the LDP the following day.
What is that charge to them?
The, it's a 10% on the LDP for the original fee, but we would charge the lot fees on the preliminary plat, and I'm happy to make changes to that as council sees fit.
Well, I mean I don't have a clue, so what kind of money are we talking about on a 75-lot subdivision?
$30 per lot. So, but I'm happy that a council, if someone's reapplying to keep it reactive, some, some consideration to reduce the fee, or just have a percentage of the original cost, happy to do something like that. Because we're not, certainly not intending to keep extracting money out of the development, just on a fee for review, if we've already done the review, right?
Right.
And they've done their original submit, and they're just trying to re-activate, I don't see a problem with just doing a percentage of a renewal.
One of the other questions that came to me from Mr. Butler was, okay, if you go in and have to reapply for your preliminary plat, do you lose your grandfather-in-law of your Georgia soil and water permits, and so on and so forth? And all research from our end indicates no, that would, that would not happen, because we've already issued, based on that preliminary plat, and it would really be a taking if we did so.
As long as the state requirements don't change, and is there a threat that the state requirements could change on that?
We've, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but we've already operated and allowed them to develop certain segments of the site, right? So if we were to go back and basically pull that away from them and make them redesign, stormwater, so on and so forth, that probably could be classified as some sort of taking.
I mean, here's your issue, your staff has given you their recommendation of what they want to do, trying to tighten this thing up, because this is an ongoing thing. But you do have, like to Mr. Calendar's point, you had one tonight, I think you have two or three coming next month and a couple the next month, that all these folks are doing is just reapplying. I mean, yes, there is some monetary issue with it, but if they hit the end of the 30-month window that he's discussed, you know, the 12 months plus the 18 months, the solution is fill out some more paperwork. And so, not trying to be burdensome to the applicant, of course, but it's just this issue of there's got to be some sort of finality, because he seems to drug on and drug on. And the other element is, is what about the ones where they never move any dirt, right? You know, so he's addressed that with this add-on of the six months. He will make changes, and we'll work with him, make changes, whatever you want on these development regs, but your staff's recommendation is to have some sort of finality to it. If you want to adjust fee, so it's not a financial burden, of course, that's within your purview. You know, you also have the issue of the five-year rule, and Brad can speak to this better, I can't, but your NOI is, or what, five years?
Yeah, I was going to say the Georgia soil
There's Georgia soil water conservation rules that are even outside of ours, that are going to kick in at some point on some of these sort of longer, ongoing projects, where they've got to renew that with the state that has nothing to do with us. And if that NOI isn't in place, then our permits aren't even any good. So, you know, your staff has given you the recommendation of what they think works, if y'all want to change the numbers, or change the dollars, of course, you certainly can. Just give your staff direction on what you want them to do. But we would not recommend sort of leaving it, well, what if it's this, what if it's this, because that's exactly what his recommendation is, is to eliminate, you know, is to get rid of, get rid of the ambiguity.
What you put into this, Brad, and of course, Logan, too.
We're not trying to be development unfriendly, we're just trying to create clear-cut parameters, especially given, you know, all the litigation we've seen.
So it'd just be a process of reapplication with exactly the same paperwork you had before, and a couple hundred bucks? However, depending on whatever yours
It's $30 per lot, but do you just want to do a flat fee on a re?
Well, I think Say something about that, I mean, you just heard a number a while ago, $260,000 on those transformers, I mean, $30 on a lot in a subdivision is a drop in the ocean for the cost of a total subdivision. I don't think that's the burden, I'm not speaking for Mr. Butler, but I think his concern was a much more global thing of, my God, if that happens, do we have to go re-permit all this other stuff? What if the state has changed the regulations in the interim? I mean, we need to do the cleanup. His point is, we don't want to do something that gets into this other stuff. And what Mr. Probst is saying is, and Mr. Rosenthal, I think, is that once those things are issued by the state, we can't take them away. They're there, right? So, I
I think we're okay then.
Yeah.
Yeah, once they start building in accordance with a set of plans, they have a vested interest at that point. I mean, that's been a very clean distinction that we've made on all these plats that have expired that we've been dealing with as of late. If their plats have expired and they haven't moved the first ounce of dirt, Georgia law is pretty clear, they don't have a vested interest right into that plan, they have to reapply, they have to come up to code with whatever the new rules are. But Reliant and these other folks who have been moving dirt, they have a vested interest in that plat, we just need to get the permit in place again. You know, whatever the process is, takes another 45, 60 days, yes, but they know when it's going to expire, so they can file 90 days before and never miss a beat.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, does council wish to have the ordinance read? We'll be back for a second reading, or actually, the official reading, I guess, next month. If there are any questions between now and then, on how to move forward with that, please get with Logan. Moving to the first reading of zoning ordinance code, text amendment number 17, are there any questions regarding this ordinance?
I'd like to propose that we table this for a month, so that we can better understand exactly the implications on this, and, and look at the city as a whole.
Comment on that?
One second. Okay, we've got a motion for a table, we'll talk about discussion after this, and a motion to table it for a month, do I have a second?
Can I understand what Ms. Malcolm's reasoning for table?
Well, I'd just like to, when you, I don't know how many, I need to look at the overall M1 zoning areas and just see, you know, where, how this is going to implicate. Because we've made some decisions like this, and there were other properties that really didn't conform to being captured into a new zoning. So, I didn't pick up on exactly all of this when I read this, and so it's become clearer that, I mean, I'll have some questions. But if we need to, if we need to move forward and, and ask questions after the first reading, that's okay. But I just feel like we all need to get a better, clear understanding, but I'd like to hear what Mr. Probst says.
But I'll second her motion.
Okay, a motion and a second to table till next month for any discussion, Logan, jump on it.
No, all I was going to bring up was, if there was a specific portion, it sounds like it's more about the M1 for you than the alcohol ordinance.
No, I get that.
What we were trying to do is provide parity for the forthcoming alcohol ordinance.
Okay.
And the land use, so we kind of wanted it to try to track at the same time, if possible, so we wouldn't have ambiguity once this other alcohol ordinance goes into place, the land. We didn't want anything to slip in the cracks in that, you know, one or two-month time period.
Okay.
So, that was my only comment there, but if there's something, such as the, the M1 use that you wanted to strip out for another time, we can do that, or we can table the whole thing, that's completely
I'm fine with, with just removing the M1 for now, so that we can get a better picture.
Okay, so
I can amend my motion.
Right, we have a motion to table and then amended motion to strip out the M1?
Temporarily.
Temporarily, until
For clarification.
Good with that, so a motion to amend and a second to amend, all in favor of amending, stripping out the M1 until we get further clarification, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now, with the stripped-out version, to
Still just the first reading, unless somebody wants the ordinance read.
But do we need
What we're going to do is we're going to go forward
Need to deny her motion to table?
No, we're, well, I, I think what she was saying is, is that she just doesn't want the M1 elements of the zoning or zoning amendment to go forward. So, we can clarify that, as long as clarifying that on the record, that's what passes, is that you're okay with the other zoning text amendments that don't relate to the M1 zoning classification moving forward? And if that's correct, then this will be considered the first reading of those portions of the zoning text amendment. And the M1 portions will have to come before you at another time with another text amendment number 18.
Okay.
Once we have those addressed, and next month can have second reading on this text amendment number 17, and be passed, should you see fit, with all elements other than M1.
Okay, so, since we'll be working on that wording, did council really want to have the first reading read anyway? Second reading next month, sounds perfect. First reading of the alcoholic beverage ordinance amendment, I think we're going to have some discussion here, are there any questions regarding this ordinance? Hearing none, I might spur the conversation, because this is the one with times. It had forever been 2 o'clock, brought to my attention, well, gosh, a year or so ago, and kind of surprised me that we had anything that stayed open that late. And then businesses started, which, you know, is fine, and, and they've done well, and that's good. So, I've had commentary on, it should be 2 o'clock, it should be 12:30. Do you want to hear it read, and then come back and talk about times, or you just want to go with it as read?
I'm still
Do we need a motion?
Well, it's just on, it's just on the reading.
Yeah, you're just in first reading, so I mean, it's basically, it's still drafted as 12:30, because that's what was in there, we made changes to the jugs, the growlers, made changes to clarify the food kitchen issue. But we never heard a definitive on what everybody was agreeing to, as far as it is either 12:30, 1:00, or 1:55. This is first reading, and so there's no real motion that needs to be made, unless y'all want it actually read. But, but what would be good is if y'all have consensus on what you want the time to be, we can, of course, make that change for next month. And then it could come for you for second reading with that definitive time placed in the hours of operation slot, and then it'll be ready for y'all for final consideration and approval.
So do we need to have a discussion now about the time that people really want to see?
I would suggest that you do it now, you don't have to, but I certainly would suggest it.
Because I'm still on board of it being 1:55, and I made that clear to some of the people that asked about it staying at 1:55. Because we understand that alcohol is a very important part of the restaurant industry, income, finance. So I'm on board of trying to keep it at 1:55.
I have 1:55 for Mr. Garrett, Mr. Dickinson?
Well, I have been all around the world on this thing, I think I've stated before, and I'm going to state again. The time isn't all that important to me, but we need to get past this back to me, but we need to get past this back and forth on what it should be. And I think I said last time, and I think Ms. Crawford said this too, I'm in favor of a reasonable compromise. I think twelve or twelve-thirty is too early, so I would suggest one o'clock. And that's last call, which means you're gonna be there, my experience anyway, is you're gonna be there another hour anyway. If last call's at two o'clock, you're gonna be there till three o'clock. So, you know, at my place, people like to get out a little earlier. So I think one o'clock's a reasonable compromise.
We've got one o'clock by Mr. Dickinson, Mr. Gregory?
I'm okay with one o'clock as a compromise.
Mr. Bradley?
I'm, I'm not, I have appropriate.
Okay. Ms. Malcolm?
I'll compromise at one o'clock.
Ms. Crawford?
I can do one o'clock.
Mr. Boyce?
Uh, one-fifty-five.
Mr. Little?
One o'clock.
I will read to you a letter from the DDA, Alcohol Ordinance Amendments, Hours of Sales under section six-point-eight-four and six-point-one-zero-eight. Dear Mayor and City Council, in our continued effort to work hand-in-hand with the city, we would like to express support of the, of the limit on hours of operation in alcohol sales in the amended alcohol ordinance. In reviewing the amendments to section six-point-eight-four-A and six-point-one-zero-eight-A, from the first reading on July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, we are in agreement that the sale of distilled spirits and wine should end at twelve-thirty P.M. The majority of restaurants that serve alcohol close well before this time. We feel that limiting hours and strictly enforcing the other provisions in this ordinance, including requiring the food be served, requiring that food be served, is critical to preserving the family-friendly atmosphere in small-town charm of Monroe. The city has worked hard to, to be progressive, yet set boundaries to prevent bars and clubs from operating under the guise of a restaurant. A twelve-thirty closing requirement in keeping, is in keeping with that goal. We encourage you to keep the twelve-thirty P.M. closing time as shown in the draft of the ordinance amendment. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you would like to discuss this further, Ms. Lisa Anderson. Okay, so I have twelve-thirty, I have one, 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 one-fifty-five, one-fifty-five, and one. Can we just come to a consensus of one o'clock?
Well, I think I heard you say earlier that, I mean, can do a consensus at one o'clock, but the real decision comes down next month.
Well, right, I just want to.
The vote won't be till next month.
Right. It's, it, it sounds pretty cut and dry on one. Okay. Would you go ahead and, and read it, first reading anyway, and just insert one as you get to it, please?
Yes, would you like it read, Mayor?
If you don't mind.
Okay, this is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Monroe, Georgia regarding permitted sale and use of alcohol inside the city limits. The Mayor and City Council of Monroe hereby ordain as follows Article One, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Monroe is hereby amended by implementing the below text amendments related to the notes, noted sections of the Code of Ordinances as follows. See Exhibit A, text which is stricken shall be removed from Code of Ordinances and text which is italicized shall be added to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Monroe. Article Two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Article Three, this ordinance will take effect from and after its adoption by the Mayor and Council of the City of Monroe. The edited or modified sections are as follows. Section six-one, definitions, there's a change in the growler section, removing the term glass from the types of growlers. Continuing in section six-one, there's a change in the definition of microbrewery. There's a change in the definition of micro-distillery. There is the addition of the definition of a wine shop. Section six-eleven, fees enumerated, there's changes in the fees enumerated in subsections seven, eight, nine, ten, and subsection fifteen is added, subsection nineteen and subsection twenty is added. In section six-seventeen, suspension or revocation of license, there is the addition of subsection J. Section six-thirty-four, in subsection D, there's deletions of various terminology relating to the purchase of a meal for taking away alcohol from the premises that's been properly sealed. Subsection six-thirty-six, there is changes relating to the cups themselves in terms of size and how the structure of the cups are approved in subsections two, subsections four, and subsections, I'm sorry, subsection C-two, subsection C-four, and subsection D-one. Section six-thirty-seven, eligibility for issue of a temporary special license permit, section sub-A is changed to allow for twenty calendar-per-year licenses. Subsection six-eighty-one, subsection one, the definition concerning food preparation is modified, and the addition of private club, subsection six, in-room service for hotels and motels, subsection seven, and special events facilities, subsection eight. Section six-eighty-four, hours and days of sale, currently it is drafted at twelve-thirty A.M., cutoff with the discussion about moving it to one A.M. There's also additional cleanup by the deletion of subsections six, sub-one, sub-two, sub-three, sub-four, sub-five, and sub-six, and cleanup in subsection D concerning the sale of alcohol on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. Subsection six-one-oh-six, same changes as before relating to distilled spirits back in subsection six, six-eighty-one, concerning the definition of food preparation in subsection one, as well as the addition, or the change of subsections eight, the addition of subsection nine, ten, and eleven. Section six-one-oh-eight, hours and days of sale, there's a change in subsection A, currently drafted as twelve-thirty A.M., with the discussions this evening about changing that to one A.M. Then there's cleanup in subsection C with the deletion of sub-one, two, three, four, five, and six, and the cleanup and clarification of service of beer and wine on New Year's Eve, New Year's Day. Subsection six-one-ten, the deletion of subsection A, sub-three, the addition of sub, of section six-one-one-two, section six-one-twelve, of the addition of a wine shop, addition of clarification language in section six-three-fifty-two concerning special event facility sales. And there's also the addition of section sixty-two-twelve, public intoxication offense, and section sixty-two-thirteen, open container offense prohibited with a subsection A, B, C, D. That constitutes the first reading of the ordinance, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenthal. I appreciate everybody's input on that. Moving to Ms. Thompson, two thousand twenty-three millage rate.
Thank you, Mayor. You have before you a recommendation from staff to do the full rollback of six-point-four, six-seven mills for the two thousand twenty-three property tax bill. The two thousand twenty-three net tax digest from Walton County shows an increase of twenty-eight and a half percent. If the millage rate was left unchanged of what it currently is for the two thousand twenty-two, this would qualify as a tax increase due to inflationary growth and the reassessments from Walton County and the digest. Instead, staff is recommending the full rollback of six-point-four, six-seven mills. This does show an increase in collections for the City of Monroe due to new growth and the reassessments in the digest. This is a decrease of point-five-nine-three mills from two thousand twenty-two, and again, this is, uh, six-point-four, six-seven mills. This will be the lowest millage rate in the last twenty-three years for the City of Monroe.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there any questions for Beth? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Before we have a motion, I would like to make a couple of comments.
Sure, please do.
On it, no. One is, I want to emphasize what Ms. Thompson said, is this, the proposed rollback rate would be the lowest in twenty-three years that the City of Monroe has done, and I would hope that that would be publicized so the citizens of Monroe would understand that this rate continues to drop. And I, I know in the twelve years I've served, I knew it was the lowest, and I'm glad to find that it's lower than twenty-three years, the lowest millage rate there's been, while other municipalities around, as well as the county, have actually increased rates during that period of time. Obviously, it continues to come down, and I just want everybody to know that. The second thing I'd like to do is to, while I'm going to support the rollback rate, and I think that's the way to go on this, I think it should be noted, as we have discussed some in the past, that due to the way the assessments have been done, the burden of the taxes has gone on homeowners. And I think it's obvious that commercial properties have not seen the increases that we've seen on homeowners. And, and I think that's a, something that should be noted now, and I would like to do two things. One is, I would like to ask if the council agrees that Mr. Probst and whoever, and the mayor maybe need to meet with the Board of Assessors to discuss this with them, to see if they can address that issue to next year, you know, when they're looking at assessments, to, to see if they can make that more fair around. The second thing I'd like to raise, because they're the same thing, I'd like to ask if this council, again, if the council approves, is that Mr. Probst and Mr. Rosenthal draft legislation to take to the, that Representative Williamson would take to the state in the next General Assembly, that would allow next year's council, if they so see fit, to place a referendum on the ballot next year to allow the city to do an additional homestead exemption for homeowners within the City of Monroe. Again, try to balance out some of the increases we've seen going on and the way the imbalance is between homeowners and commercial properties. So unless there's an objection from the council, and I could put it in a form of motion if I need to, but unless there's an objection in council, if we could get that to Representative Williamson so he can get, I understand it has to go through the General Assembly for passage before it can be placed as a referendum, and we can't put it into effect until there's a referendum. So I'd like to see that go before the General Assembly. That's an objection.
A municipal option sales tax.
Just a general homestead.
General homestead.
Homestead exemption.
Homestead exemption for the city, city homeowners.
Okay.
Well.
I, I think, can we?
But before we get into that, I think we need to really have some information about economically how that would affect our operations. I mean, like everybody else, I don't like paying taxes, but we have a responsibility to our citizens to make sure that we remain fiscally stable, and we have serious commitments in the pipeline, and I just, while I, I am not opposed to the idea of doing that, I think what we need to do tonight is just vote on what the millage rate is gonna be, get some further information about how these other proposals might affect us. I, I'm just not ready to move forward with sending something to the legislature without clear data on what that does, because when you do that kind of thing, inevitably, it's the law of unintended consequences. Something, you, you do something, you think it's good, and then all of a sudden, you have all these unintended consequences that aren't so pretty, and then you gotta fix them, and.
And, and my issue is, Dixon, and I don't, I don't disagree with you at all. I think it needs to be discussed further and more research. However, it's my understanding that the legislature has to pass this in order that next year's council can even make a decision on putting it on a referendum. I don't think, because the legislation would allow that to happen, that the council necessarily has to do it, but it makes it allowable. And that's all I was trying to do, is to get it through the legislature so the next year's council can make a decision if that's what they want to do and the amount that they want to do. That's, that's what I was proposing. But I, I, I won't be here for next year's council, so I'll let someone else make that decision.
Would, would you be amenable to making the motion as is and then follow up on the other two? I, I think that's.
Right, just, I don't want to further complicate this. I've talked way too much tonight, but if y'all are going to take an action or a motion like that, you're gonna need to amend the agenda, because what's on the agenda, what's before you now, is the passage of the millage rate. And so if you want to give direction for staff to work on that, it's fine, but if you want to make official action, you're gonna need to amend the agenda to add that as an action item to move forward.
And I was trying to do it without a motion, but if there's disagreement, Mr. Dixon, that probably don't work.
I think unofficially, I can embark through the rest of the year, collect data, try to get, uh, get footing on this, because the gold dome fires back up in January, so hopefully I'll have some more information to you before the end of the year.
How soon would they need to know?
In January.
If we could do that before Mr. Bradley finishes his term, so.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
That's good.
Okay, so.
That's all I have to say.
So a motion to approve the full rollback, Larry? Is there a second?
Second.
I'm gonna give that one to David. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. And as Larry said, this is the lowest rate in twenty-three, lowest millage rate in, in twenty-three years. Yeah, and we didn't research the last century, so.
And Mr. Howard, I wonder who the mayor was when we had that, that X-ray back there?
I don't know, but I bet he was a dang good-looking man. Moving to the approval of the traffic pattern change, I don't think we're moving to an approval, we're just gonna discuss that next, again, next month?
Do that next month.
Same on the South U cul-de-sac?
Yes, I'll give you some more information about.
I don't know if Henry, Henry. Do we need a motion table, or we just?
You don't, if no action's gonna be taken, it's effectively the same, is it just dying? So if y'all don't want to take any action on J or K, you don't have to, and then it can just come back up next month.
Let's not, let's move to district items. Ms. Malcolm?
Mayor, before you do, I've talked way too much tonight, so I hate to talk anymore. But I do have to just throw in a shameless plug, if I can, for five seconds.
Yes, sir.
Most of y'all know that we are getting a Humane Society coming online in Walton County, and I think that's a really good thing, and my family's getting to help with that, because we're having a charity benefit concert on August the twenty-sixth. It is the inaugural fundraising kickoff event for the Humane Society of Walton County. They're gonna be stood up and running within the next ninety days, being able to take rescues and avoid kills and all that sort of thing. The further shameless plug goes, that that charity benefit concert will be featuring my daughter at the Engine Room, and so I'm a little biased, but she does sound pretty good. So August twenty-sixth, at the Engine Room, tickets are twenty-five dollars. A hundred percent of all proceeds go to the Humane Society. Everything's been donated, we've gotten everything donated, so there'll be beer and wine, so there's a cash bar, but the ticket gets you in, gets you to hear a good singer and a great band, great singer and great band, gets free food all night from Mama's Boys out of Athens, gets free non-alcoholic drinks, and then beer and wine's five dollars, liquor's ten, and we'll have raffles, and we may even have puppies there to have your picture made with the puppies, so make sure and show up to, but it does cost five dollars to, you know, get a picture of the puppy. So that's my shameless plug.
Okay, just so you know, the mayoral update was going to say Bella Rose.
Oh, okay, sorry. And I do have flyers, if anybody wants them, so, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Malcolm?
I'm just excited to see the town green finally coming to fruition. That's not really in my district, but it is, it affects us all. I'm sure everybody else feels that way, too, and just appreciate our departments working so hard through these storms and helping get all the debris up and keeping our roads safe.
Yes, all, yes to all the above. Ms. Crawford?
Pretty much dead old town green, and other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, motion. Mr. Boyce?
No, sir.
Um, I'm gonna bump in on yours. Coach Boyce just took a team to the national championship. We're gonna be recognizing him next month. There's only one national champion. That's, that's pretty awesome.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory?
Just want to say thanks to the city crew and everything so well, and I'm excited about the town green also.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Little?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Dickinson?
Nothing else.
Well, you know, I didn't talk as much as Paul tonight, but I do have, I do have a couple of things. First, I got a picture this morning from our first silver medalist, Ms. Patricia Roberts. She is headed to Massachusetts to be inducted into the Naismith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame with the nineteen-seventy-six ladies Olympic team from the United States, won the silver, silver, silver medal, and they're honoring them as, as trailblazers to, to female sport. So one nice lady, one good athlete, and just a good person, so if you see Ms. Roberts, please, y'all congratulate her. Moving to Nelson Mandela Fellows, University of Georgia hosted the Nelson Mandela Fellows program, was from Washington and, and the African continent. Kirkland and I hosted about thirty of them at the courthouse, at the historic courthouse, gave them tours. um, at the historic courthouse, gave them tours, some of them presented at the story shop. Uh, some of them went toward the bridge school. A couple of them are opening, uh, a, a school for physically challenged kids. And, uh, and with, with some processing issues and autistic type issues and just a fantastic group. One of them was a UN global ambassador. Uh, one of them was an attorney who walked to school 10 kilometers, 6.2 miles every day for seven years. And he walked home the same 6.2 miles. Had one who had very, very little use of his legs, climbed to the top of, uh, the, the tower at the historic courthouse. These folks' stories would just knock your socks off. So they're from Zimbabwe, Ghana, Madagascar, Ethiopia, Egypt. I do have, I do have their bios. If, if y'all want to see those, they're up in my office. I think I have a couple of bound copies. Just a fantastic group that, um, that Matthew Chancy's, uh, grandfather, uh, helped negotiate their coming to Monroe. They, they spent time in a college town at the University of Georgia. Uh, they spent time in the big city and being Atlanta. And then they wanted a thriving small town and, uh, Monroe fit the bill for them. So I was excited that they could be here. Then Kirkland and I went and took them to dinner on their last night here before they all flew out to Washington. You need to get to know those stories. The, it's a nice example of, of effort and it's also, it sits pretty nicely in our standard of living here in the United States. Because they had some stories that would knock your socks off. Um, Mike McGuire. Got a letter about you. Uh, fiber optic installation. This is from Ms. Joyce Evans. Thank you to the City of Monroe for the awesome professional employees you have in the IT TV department. My home was built in 1934 and has plastered walls. I don't know all the ins and outs, but the job they had to do inside and outside my home to get this new system installed. I do know how prompt, courteous, dedicated and determined team players they are under the leadership of Mike McGuire, including Alex, Brett, Eli and Todd Leachman. So I just want to tell someone, not everything ran smoothly, but the best work, they worked until they were successful with the outcome and I'm pleased with their results. So thank you. Also got a call on Sunday afternoon with a young lady whose power had been out, could not, uh, could not access the internet. Todd Leachman went over to her house, fixed her modem, got her all set up because she works from home and had a big project to do on Monday. I won't pass that name because she's not giving me the opportunity, but, uh, please pass our thanks to Todd and thank you for, for what you're doing. What's our total today? Iber? So, shot 17 heaven, we'll be at 2,000 next month? We're shooting for 2,000 next month. Okay, well, thank you. I, I appreciate you taking the ball and running with it. Uh, remember, um, Bella Rosenthal at the engine room? Want to, uh, want to mention, we've had discussions about housing. We have a retreat August 24th. Correct? But I do want you to know these numbers. The Housing Authority, public housing, we have 383 units. We have 255 Lytec units. We have 100 section eight units in the town. Madison, uh, our neighbor has their affordability index for affordable housing in Madison. For workforce is from 200 to 350,000. That's the, that's their goal, what they're shooting for. So, uh, gives you a little, uh, thing to think about before we move into that meeting. Other than that, I, I think it's been a real productive meeting. I appreciate all of your attention. And I think I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn by Ms.
Executive session or?
We don't, if we don't have an executive session, I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Malcolm, is there a second?
Second, second.
We'll give that one to Ms. Crawford. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.